December 30th, 2024, 10 o'clock. I'll call this meeting order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Hamill.
Here.
Number four, here. Okay. Approval of payroll warrants and claims.
I move we do so.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number five. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting, December 16th, 24. Any additions or corrections?
I have none. I move we approve it.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number six. Discussion possible action regarding the owner contractor agreement for the Alvin Senior Citizens Center and change order between Allen Ellis Construction and Woods County.
And I would take these to Brian and have him look them over and he said they look good, so.
Okay. Essentially, that changes it to from 1.4 or whatever to $1,22,682.
That's a total.
Yes.
Yeah.
The new contract sum is what that is. Do we stamp that or do we not?
Looks like.
Okay. We didn't have that figure that day, did we? Do you have that?
I don't know. No, but she could pull that up.
Did you say the number was? It was a million twenty-two, but it only shows us. Was it, we have D-33 now?
Yeah. Because that's what I remember. So there's $10,000 there difference.
I remember that number.
Well, okay. But it only has including in the deducts is 140,850. And I thought there were more deducts than that from that original bid.
Can you pull that up?
Is what I, that's what it's got me.
Winona's was different.
Is it 1566?
It was a.
Before we approved it, I was thinking that we had way more we were gonna do.
Which one?
The, the one you called.
Yeah. Dirt and all that stuff.
Oh yeah, 33.
And on this deal, see the deduct is on the 140,000.
Okay, bring that up.
I think way more than that. Several.
Put all that stuff down here.
Do they got us included in there though?
I don't know.
Yeah, because.
Or is that just?
All I'm getting, all I see that that's doing is taking the original bid.
The parking lot.
Okay, so we had 130,000 taken off for the change order.
Okay.
I thought. And then we had, um, we had the minus alternative number one, which was 256,700.
See, and that's, that's not even.
And the.
That's what.
Number two was 19,000 something, number three was 6,160. And minus five was 74,500 and minus six was 24,700. So.
Well, that's what, that's all I'm getting at. It only shows 140.
Right. Well, it doesn't start, it doesn't show starting out as high as what it did in the beginning because it was 1.5.
Right.
And here it's 1.1.
Okay, maybe it's because we took those deducts that were listed in there and then another a 140 additional. Because it's, that's down, they're pretty close to the, what, we anticipated.
Yeah.
Right.
This, this doesn't show it.
I guess not.
So we'll have to just laugh like Kidn' Grand with that PO that we already did.
Oh, here, the deducts on that other time. That's still, this change though, I mean from. This is where, this is for the 140,000.
Yeah.
But that's, you know. Okay. I'm guessing that's, that's kosher if they're slower, but I wouldn't get too concerned about. I'd leave it at that really.
We have to until we pay it anyway, so.
Okay. So do we need to sign on that or?
Yeah.
Probably, but well, this one is the deal. I don't know.
Yeah, just sign here, so I'll stand it.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion to approve the 1,22,682.
I'll make that motion we do so.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. But you're only going to encumber that.
I, we've already encumbered the 1, the 1,033. Yeah, we've already encumbered that part. Because we did that the day we accepted it.
Right.
Yeah.
But there could be more change orders. Okay, number seven. Discussion possible action regarding the owner contractor agreement for the Winona Senior Citizens Center and change order between Calm Construction and Woods County.
And this one turns out to be 26,619.63 more than what we discussed that day. And so I'm gonna have to encumber one on for that.
Well, we, we, we knew there was gonna be a little of that deal. Okay. At 427,308 is what this contract, that, yep. That's the same thing that he sent me. Okay. Change order, okay. Okay. I need a motion to approve that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. You got two pages.
Mine. Okay, I already fixed it, I just didn't. Thank you.
Just that one spot? Yeah.
Oh, and we better correct these, uh, this agenda item, both of them. Because I got the two guys backwards.
Name backwards.
I got Alva with Allen Ellis and.
I thought about that and wondered about that.
So we, yeah, you guys need to correct that.
I didn't know, I couldn't.
You'd correct that.
Okay. Back on six and seven, but six we'll correct first. Should be between Calm Construction and Woods County.
With Al.
Which it has Al. Yes, that's for Al and which is on here for Winona, but that's, it should be for Alvis and Allen Ellis Construction and Woods County should be for item number seven.
Yeah.
Yes.
The contractors needs which?
Yes.
Six, seven. They're vast that way.
Yeah. So I need to pay a motion to that.
Motion if we do so.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Number eight. Approve, approval of the transfer of appropriations from ARPA MNO to capital outlay in amount of 1,286,865.67 from ARPA interest to capital outlay in the amount of 126,344.70.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Can you move that?
Yeah.
John did.
John did. Did you do the Winona one too?
Yes, yeah.
I was worried about changing that.
I need, do I need to sign both of these?
Yeah.
And that's it?
Mm-hmm.
You okay? This is a lot of trouble. Okay. Number nine. Discussion possible action regarding road crossing permits. One way for D and PU Oil Field Service Incorporated.
There's two of them here.
Okay.
Lines for water, fresh water, and these guns. Uh, permissions attached and that's in, um, District Three, it's in 33, 24, 13, 17, 23.
It's down there, Kent Bakers, uh, he's, they're tracking that well that's down there on that state.
Okay, I just was curious, I mean.
He's just trying to move water down there.
Okay.
And he has to give it off to that alley blacktop and push it down there and then push it over.
Are these two, I think they're both up here, so I'll make that motion though.
Yeah, but the other one is totally different.
All right. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
The next one has, um, a $6,000 check with it and it's water also. Trenching. It's in D3 also. 18, 23, 13, and 16, 23, 13.
You get with that?
Yeah.
Now I'll make the motion.
I get a second there?
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Oh, there it is.
Sorry.
That's, yeah. Had trouble finding. So you don't have to search through everything. Okay, number 10. Looks like an apple.
I know.
Discussion possible action regarding the ODOT supplemental and modification agreement number one, project maintenance financing and right-of-way agreement. Bridge approaches over Salt Fork River on north-south 2490. Point five miles north of VW, east-west 14B. CN241B project. I don't know what CN means, but. STP 244F, dress C111. Part, partial. No.
Part one, C1 or separate?
Yeah, I guess. Uh, part one, C1. State job number 34561, 04, 05, 06, and 07. Well, David, I know that you're.
Yeah, it's on the salt.
Yeah.
I move we approve that.
I will second that. Favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 11. This is, is this just an acknowledgement, John, or do we need to take action?
No, I already know that. It's that greater than a lease, it's just a.
We won't any action, that's always getting that. Number 11. Discussion possible action regarding D3, 2018, John Bear Grader, 772G payoff, so.
It was a lease purchase and I just went ahead and purchased it. I can at least run it out.
All right.
Very good. I will lease another one come February, but that's down the other.
Number 12. Discussion possible action regarding removing Brooke Meyer from requisitioning officer, removing Moore Bradford from receiving officer, office, adding her to requisitioning officer and adding Braylon Brot as receiving officer for the free fair accounts. Removing Diane Wallace and add Chelsea Cummings as receiving officer.
I move we do that.
I will second that.
All in favor? Just clear up their.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've had some quit and channing.
Moving around.
Retire.
We'll have to do it again next week.
Aye. All in favor? Aye. Yeah.
Next week we'll have.
Because it'll be a new year or?
Well, because Shane will be coming in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just practice.
Yeah. Just use some more E.
Yeah.
Shane moves to practice. He'll shine, I'm gonna shine the sun.
Number 13. Discussion possible action regarding the OEW REIT affidavit of completion for Freedom Fire Department grant number WD-24-5.
I'm assuming that's just closing out their, their stuff?
Set as completion, so.
Yeah. I move we do that.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. Number 14. Discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant contract for rural water district number three for the purchase of painting interiors at Three Water Towers in the amount of 75,000.
I move we do that also.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify that a little bit, they do, that's an epoxy coating that has to be on the inside of those steel tanks to keep them from rusting and the rust getting into water. Number 15. Discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant contract with Alvin Fire Department for the purchase of a command vehicle in the amount of 75,000. To me.
Go ahead, I'll second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
They're both the same thing.
Yeah.
Number 16. Discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant contract for Freedom EMS for the purchase of a cardiac monitor and Lucas device in the amount of 75,000.
I move we do so.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number 17. Discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant contract for Cap and Fire Department for the purchase of a radio improvement in the amount of 18,687.70.
I move we do that.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Number eight. Discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant contract for Winona EMS for the purchase of Lucas devices in the amount of 40,811.60.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Number 19. Discussion possible action regarding establish, establishing a new KIMRE for this fiscal year.
The move? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, number 20. Discussion possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from the General Government Building Fund Capital Outlay to the REIT fund in the amount of 284,499.30.
I move we do so.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And just so anybody that's interested, know the side of this. That's, we get reimbursed that, we just cover the cost of these REIT grants until they're, they're completed and spent and then that money gets put back in there in the general fund. Okay. Number 21. Discussion possible action regarding the implementation and service agreement with total response in Woods County 911 in the amount of 56,498.
I move we approve that.
Said I move we approve that. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Good?
Yep.
Number 22. Discussion possible action regarding bid number 242506, six-month bid. I think y'all got it, trying to get us looking at it to see if what we, we need to change or.
No bid on senior.
Single source mainly.
Yep.
Gosh. Did that stuff go up in Enid or did it go up in Enid?
What's that? If I'm looking at this rock jelly. This yellow on this delici. This side's down there and, and then this side here is Enid.
Right.
Right up there, it's got a little line between it.
It says.
Cooper Tenor or Eni.
And then what side's Enid?
Okay.
Yep.
Just like it always is, it looks like there's a little more of a difference than there has been. It's, it's been 12, 14 dollars a ton more, which amounts to the freight normally, but the rail, there is more than that. I know, that's what I'm saying now.
I mean, that, that yellow price is about the price it was at Enid.
Yeah.
And now it's, it's doubled down there, it looks like. He's getting cheaper on the, see, he's got the Jiprock bill again. I still don't think it's feasible though, even at nine.
Yeah. To go opposite.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Just, it looks okay, it's just that it depends on what you're gonna get, you know?
Yeah.
Wall's about the same.
Kind of a little bit changeable.
No, if, if anyway, it might have went cheap down a little bit, two or three cents. I wanna say it was 284. Right outside. Think I'll wear it a little bit.
I lost that thing. Our toast and get the chip.
What was that on?
That's a hot mix. 109 dollars a yard.
From Alvis Guns. They all went to bid.
Yeah, well, no, we're now got it, but it's too far now. You know, so. You know, so. Type B or S four?
I guess I missed, what age is that?
That is fourteen. Eighteen, two, one, twenty, thirty dollars cheap, cheaper a yard, down there. Be a ton, right? Yeah, argh, yeah, ton, yard.
Yeah, it's kinda same with the.
Doesn't matter, so, I see. I guess that my, what I'm seeing from that is, that that's the only one there's any, any questions, should take a little bid on everything but this and due to the, to the mileage.
You know the mileage.
Well, the, uh. Well, the Jiprock.
The Jiprock is the same situation.
Oh, okay.
You know, uh, Feral down there's got the, the, the Jiprock bid. The low bid on it, but it's just too far. Trucking's about the same, it's not.
So, um.
I'd say except everything, except for that Jiprock and that, I mean, that, that hot mix, which I got some of that last week. It was a hundred and four dollars that I had to go to Enid to get it.
So, we'll pick it, the Delisi? For our coast?
No, for, for the Jiprock? No, our coast.
It's closer.
Cheaper, closer. Say for.
Jesse, whatever.
How will they, are you wrong? Whatever they bid on?
I didn't.
And Delisi? Is.
Hoskin.
I don't know.
How much were the chips at Enid?
They were like twenty-eight something, but now they're forty-two, thirty-eight.
Jeez. What are they, what'd it say?
Twenty-six oh-five.
She don't have a choice of, because that's only people that bid, it's the Delisi only that stuff.
They've doubled. Double the Jip.
There isn't, there isn't much, the only, the only deal is on inch and a half crush and run on, on the Jip.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, if, if you wanted to, you use two and a half inch crush and run and not get two inch, and that's the only place that it makes a difference, except on the fines. There's a lot of difference on the fines if you want fines.
It's just it's fifty-something miles down there to get.
Well, right, but I'm, all I'm saying is those two items, the fines.
Two that are.
And, and the inch and a half.
Yeah.
The inch and a half and two inch are the only things that, and our coast has done the list two inch. They're two and a half.
Two and a half, inch and a half.
So the inch and a half is the only.
Are they listing five eighths on there?
Yeah, I, it's down here in the cover, but that's.
The Delisi's.
The Delisi's only bid on it. On, on the chips.
No, I mean on the Jiprock.
No. Unless you call it fines. There, there is no place.
See that three-quarter crush and run?
Yeah.
It's about the only thing you can get that is down there at Southern. But that's.
And five-eighths crush and run is not, nobody can bid on that. So I don't know is if you wanna, you follow what I'm saying though, that, that it's not really comparable. Inch and a half is the only thing that I see that you might want, we might wanna put on here as, as.
Right.
Not taking the low bid.
Yeah, that.
We don't do that.
As. The.
And which one do we do?
All fine.
Each and a half. The our coasta because of the, the difference in mileage.
Okay. And then the other was the hot?
The, the fines.
Oh, okay.
Is that? Cummins cheapest on hot, right?
Well, when you.
Fourty-five.
But those are the only.
Cummins versus Enid or Woodford versus Clinton.
Those are the only three things that I see. To take the low bid on, accept the low bids on everything except for those three items and do the mileage. Does that? Any guys wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We, we said that is probably what we're talking.
I would be down on it, so.
You're right.
Oh, see, I'm about the same as last six months, because it's the same situation. Blacktop and, and that, that Feral is medium for, for a year and a half, you know, but we just can't.
Okay, number twenty-three, new business.
I have none.
Well, I do. Well, thank you.
I wanna thank you guys, that's.
For all you've done for Woods County, Randy, I appreciate it. And, man, I, we're gonna miss you down here. But we're gonna call you every once in a while and make you do the work.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanna make sure that you know that we appreciate you much.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate it, appreciate working with you guys for all this and, I don't know. Marion, you wanna, Shane, you wanna get over here and take a picture and show the new man on the block?
Not really.
Well, you're gonna be on it every week.
Shout it in there.
We're gonna get your shot taken now.
But I'll leave it up to you if you wanna wait till next one, but.
Is it okay to go ahead and spill the beans that you've agreed to be my foreman?
I can't. So, okay. We'll move on. Moving for approved, disapproved, blank purchases.
I move we do so.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
And number five, twenty-five, motion to adjourn.
I move we do that.